Yeah, it does.
Should we go ahead and?
Yeah, I think we're good to go.
Go ahead and call the meeting order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got a couple adds to the agenda for tonight. Under consent agenda, we want to add A to H, pay request for Hazelton. That should be in your packet. And then, under Engineers, K1, just an update on the roundabouts in Water Tower. Do you have anything to add, Paul?
Um, what were we going to add? Ian's update on the 7th Street?
That's right, yeah.
Should that go under?
That'll go under Old Business, yeah. G1.
I don't have anything else.
Nothing. Right, Mel. Okay. We'll take a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Motion to have a second.
I'll swing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank you. Consent agenda. Does everybody get a chance to go through that? Have any questions? Here none. I'll take a motion to approve. Motion to have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, there is no visitors. There is no mayor report. So, there's no public forum, no public hearing. Committee report, F1 EDA, pedals to metals.
Yep. So, at the April EDA meeting, they recommended to approve a reimbursement to the amount of $1,675 for a facade grant. Uh, this is for pedals to metals, right there in Main Street, for a new sign. So, the total cost of that was $3,350. So, 50% of that is $1,675. So, Council asked to approve that reimbursement.
And the EDA was all in favor of...
Yes, all in favor.
It looks nice up there, too, so. Do we motion to that?
Mm-hmm.
Take a motion to approve. Got a motion. Do we got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Next, Planning Commission, the fence variance.
Yep. So, Jake and Julie Thompson of 1,005 7th Ave. Northwest applied for a variance. Uh, that was in order to build a fence higher than the six-foot standard height for fences in Casson. Uh, the reason that they asked for the variance was mostly due to provide greater privacy to their backyard. Uh, 8th Avenue Northwest is in their backyard along with Sunset Trail over there. Uh, but basically, due to the sloping and topography of their backyard, they felt that a higher fence than what's normally allowed was necessary to provide uh, privacy to their backyard. Um, so there was a public hearing for that at the Planning Commission meeting on Monday night, um, after which we talked about uh, some alternatives that they could employ in order to provide uh, privacy to their backyard that would remove the necessary uh, necessity for a variance to build a taller fence. So, we discussed changing the grading a little bit so the slope wouldn't be as extreme, and then they could build a six-foot fence instead, or simply just moving the six-foot fence closer to their home so it's not quite so near to the, that rear property line there. Uh, or we talked about using vegetation instead. So, after that, the Planning Commission voted, and a majority voted to deny. So, there's a resolution included in your packet there that would, after approval tonight, would deny the variance.
Anybody got any questions for that?
So, I believe at the end of that meeting, Tim, you and Ian were going to see if you can follow up and try and help them. Did you get in contact with them?
Not further than what we had discussed at the meeting. And I did speak with her briefly before the meeting. She had called and I kind of went through the options as well.
I think you need to, you wanted to touch base with-
But I will follow up.
You wanted to touch base with Brandon, too, I think, on that grade, if there was going to be an issue there. So, I think the staff felt like either retaining wall in the backyard, and I know we had talked about that a little bit, either that or providing fill was kind of the option, you know, in building that up. So, I think that was something that Ian was going to touch base with you on, is we need to make sure that it stays out of the drainage way, obviously. But I think he was looking for a recommendation or just sort of some follow-up. Does, you think that will negatively impact the drainage way if they fill that in? What they basically be looking at doing is bringing in some fill and flattening it off so that the grade isn't so steep. But they'd still have-
Yeah, we'd have to maintain the drainage way-
Yeah.
-next to the trail.
Right.
Yeah, that, you know, as long as it's not too steep, I mean, good guys can throw up and throw down.
Okay. And then, in terms of, you had brought up the retaining wall, like, how would that work for them?
Uh, so there's a, so the, the house sits up and then it kind of grades some manner. I'd have to look a little closer. Down to a ditch, and then that ditch is slightly lower than the trail. So, in that grading, from the ditch bottom where we need water to flow uh, perpendicular to their backyard, up to kind of their house, they could have potentially um, some ability to put a retaining wall in to kind of flatten out their yard. And then, if that fence is on top of a different grade, it could maybe be meet their aesthetics or what they're looking for, for the fence. I, you know, I don't look at it that closely. Then we'll just use some of the kind of tools in the toolbox to-
Sure.
-to look at it, to make it look a little bit different.
Yeah. I mean, I think the follow-up you need to have with them is related to, you know, having fill brought in. Or, we talked about utilizing fill when they dig out that basement in the house that's going into that bottom lot there. Just have them bring it over and then lay it out so that the fence will be high enough, and that'll be the positive impact. So, I think it probably would be good for you to follow up with her.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I'm sure if they talk to the builder, they're more likely favorable to share their fill, because they don't have to-
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to drag it out of there and, you know, carry it out. That'd probably be the easiest fix for them, really. I mean, I think Ian's point tonight is that he wanted to make sure that it was denied fully by council before he brought any other solutions to them.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. I will take a motion for the resolution denying the variance.
I will make the motion based on what we've been provided to deny the variance at 1,005 7th Ave. Northwest for a 10-foot fence, eight 10-foot fence.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Um, next, uh, we'll go on to Old Business, and that's Ian again.
Yes, so-
The house on 7th.
I'll just walk through that a bit. So, on April 12th, I received the first complaint for that property at 15 7th Street Northwest. Um, that complaint was in regard to rats specifically. Um, so on April 13th, I went out and visited the property there, and then I took some photos, and I did send a letter to the homeowner at that time, giving them the date. It was April 20th to, you know, the property. Um, since then, I believe, the homeowner, Jean Jakes, came and spoken with the city administrator, Tim, to talk about the issue there. And then, we kind of extended the deadline where she could act on the complaint there, um, which would have been yesterday, the day before this meeting. And so, yesterday, I did go out there and took some more pictures there to compare the work that has been done since I first went out there back in April. And from what I could see, there was quite a lot of effort put into the front of the yard. You could see that there was a noticeable change there. Um, she did put up a, a tarp shed, but really, from the, the rear yard, you can still see quite a lot of items there in the backyard that, in my opinion, would still be in violation of our ordinances. And in the rear yard, that is city-owned property right there next to Veterans Memorial Park.
So, is it junk, or are we talking continued health nuisance attracting rodents?
I didn't observe any rats either of the times that I was there, but just complaints with the, the other property owners, that's what I see. And I did get a second complaint, actually, on, uh, May 8th, but also talked about rats of the specific property. But I just never observed them myself when I was there. But, uh, from reports of last year, when we went through the abatement process, there were rats at that time.
Right. I mean, I went, I go pass on a regular basis when I walk over there to the Veterans Park. And, you know, there is, so there is a tarp shed up now, which is good, because there's a, it's a big one. So, she can get a lot of stuff in there. Um, one thing that I, I talked to the county administrator today about, and it was something that one of the staff people brought up, um, trying to control the supply of materials. So, you know, she goes out to the dump and takes materials out of there, and the county has told us that they're, you know, you're not really supposed to be able to do that. I mean, you know, the, so that's something that maybe, you know, working with the county, we can kind of crack down on the supply stuff side of it. I mean, because that's part of the issue. So, last year, we spent money to clean it up. She just went back and got more. Um, I appreciate that she's made an effort to get that, that tarp up. And frankly, one suggestion that she and I discussed when we visited was putting, putting a fence up. I, I know it doesn't necessarily solve the situation on the site, but it would, you know, provide a better aesthetic for, for residents. And it probably would be a benefit to her, frankly, more than anybody else, because, uh, it'd be a little harder for people to argue against the, the stuff that she has. She's kind of got that deck in the back, if you recall, and it's, it's pretty well loaded up with materials. So, um, I guess at this point, you know, as long as she makes progress on it, you know, I, I don't want to have to go in and bait it again. I know that was quite a process last year, but it's up to the direction of the council and what you, you know, decide that you want to do with the property.
Well, if there's still stuff, we'll call it, in the backyard, I think we should still send another letter notifying her, thank you for cleaning up the front yard, but ordinance says you have to clean up the whole yard, and give her a new date to clean that up. Otherwise, I have a feeling more is going to migrate back there. If, you know, and if it's an eyesore, especially if it's open to public property and the park be on the backside, granite people shouldn't trespass, but if somebody trespasses, a kid gets up there because they're playing at the park and gets injured, we got another issue. So, I, I think we should at least follow up with her and ask her to clean up the rest of it, and thank her for doing the front part, and give her another deadline, and then start the process again.
It needs to be cleaned up or either out of sight, right? Put in the shed, or?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
To do the proper-
Or put a fence around it?
I'm less concerned about the objects on the property, but if there is a rat problem, then we have a problem. Speaking of someone that had a neighbor's rat problem come into my house, not here, but in Georgia, and they did several thousand dollars' worth of damage to my house, just because they were freely wandering back and forth between the food source and the living, living place they did.
And do you have this one they've been working to clear the rats away with?
Well, uh, no, actually, if you look down at our new business, we'll be talking about another house where we did get a rat complaint. So, it's interesting, um, you know, our city code right now doesn't actually cover rats. It doesn't really cover that component of public health. So, we had a little debate, uh, and the city attorney was, uh, aware of it with the county. I mean, the counties, in most counties in Minnesota, from what I can tell, the, the county covers the public health. We, we don't do public health. It's not really something the city has in our, you know, we don't have a department of public health or anything. Um, so, my recommendation will be to add, uh, specifically, you know, rats of the, or into our, our code. Um, so what we deal with right now is we pretty much deal with, you know, detritus in the, in the yard, building materials that are left, kind of that kind of a stuff. So, but I do think that, that'd be healthy for us to add. And, uh, if the county isn't going to be handling in city limits, that's fine. So, yeah, I mean, I, I agree that, you know, we don't want to let, let it fester. So, I mean, I think, you know, Ian, is that something, you know, you can follow with Jean on? And, and, uh, I don't know. I mean, to me, like I said, for me, if they could fence it off from the park on the backside, that would help a ton. She, right now, she's kind of got her car parked angled-
In, in front of a shed.
Blocking, so you can't see in there, which, like I said, maybe it's an aesthetic improvement for folks from the road, out of sight is, uh, out of mind for some people. But we know that there's still a lot of issues with the material there.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, because it's a, you know, it's a, it's a nice property by the park there, so.
And, and we got a neighbor right next to him that built the fence.
And that, I think, is who we get most of the complaints from, is from that neighbor.
And I understand. I mean, he did build a fence just to block it, but if there's a-
Is he the gentleman that complained last year?
Yeah.
Who, um-
He came for his father, correct?
Well, the father was here, too.
Father was here, too.
Saying-
Was that same, was that complaint on the 8th from the same resident, or was it-
It was a different person. Um, it was not, it was, it was a different resident.
Okay. Because I know the first, first complaint was from, from them, but I didn't hear about the second. I don't know. Paul, you're kind of over in that neighborhood. I mean, do you ever, like, walk past that and see it or anything?
I mean, I do. I didn't, I haven't been over there since the shed's been put up, because I haven't seen that yet.
Okay.
So.
I drive by it every day.
It's not large.
It's better than it was last year.
Probably already full.
Yeah. See, that's my concern, is I, I have a feeling, like, that's going to be full, and then you're going to see more appear back on the, on the area, which is the, that's the issue. If it would just could be self-contained, it wouldn't be so much of a deal, but-
And then she puts up another shed, and then she fills it, and then she puts up a, like-
And I have a feeling she's not in compliance with what we asked her.
No, she's not, not 100% compliant.
And that's why, uh, wouldn't hurt to send another letter, so she knows that she's still not in compliance, so we can-
Is there any other feedback from council for staff? Otherwise, I mean, that's what we'll do. What I'm hearing is, you know, we need to follow up, and we'll send a letter, and maybe Ian, you can even stop up and visit with her and, and kind of point out what the council's talking about today. Or I'll go with you, it's fine. I know, I'm not trying to back on you. Uh, but yeah, I mean, we, it's warm now, that's part of the issue. Now it's going to heat up, and we have to, we'll have issues with water and tires and mosquitoes and other-
Exactly.
Other things going on, especially by the park where the kids are, so.
We don't want it to get so far that we have a health issue with more than just man.
You're going to have a lot more people over there by the volleyball court with the volleyball league program, starts, league starts, yep.
Yep.
Food sources and trash cans.
Yeah, and then you got a pool open, and you, you will have food sources, big time.
That's true.
All right, thanks, Ken. Excuse me. New business. We'll move right into the nuisance ordinance, rats.
Sure. Well, including your packet, I did include a, sort of a draft, uh, chapter five, but, uh, it kind of, this, this would define things maybe a little differently than, in our current code, as I said, doesn't, doesn't carry this, um, section. So, I think that, um, I just included this as an example. Included also in there is the county's, uh, public nuisance ordinance, um, which, you know, as I said, it, it surprised me a little bit when, uh, they indicated they weren't going to, but, um, you know, that's fine. We, we can add that into our code. I think we need to add that in. So, what I'd like to do is, uh, I'm, I'll be having some additions made to our code, bring that as a, a draft to the council, and then we'll have a public hearing on it. Um, some of the things, like I said, in the, the section five, this is from a different city, but, um, it's very clear, diseased animals, ponds or pools are stagnant water, carcasses of animals not buried. A lot of that isn't included in our code at all, so.
The ponds or pools? How do you, we got to make sure that we are wording that, because we have the overflow ponds, which do sit stagnant.
You're talking about the drainage ponds, like the stormwater ponds?
Stormwater ponds, which are-
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly word it a little differently. These are just examples one of the-
Well, yeah, but I just want to make sure that, because, you know, the city has plenty of those, and then somebody's going to say, "Well, how are you allowing that?"
Sure.
So, because there, you know, there's no movement in those unless you have heavy rains or snow melts, or-
Yeah.
It's a nice-
Separation.
Yeah. I mean, there's one right behind my house, and it's fine.
We have one next to us, too, yeah.
You have the frogs.
Just the season.
It's coming.
They're there already.
So.
But there's, you know, seems, it seems to be fine. It never seems to create a issue, but-
There was a real short, um, in one of these examples that, um, included, it says, "Any infestation of insects, vermin, vectors, or rodents, or any harborage or, or breeding area for the same," as, you know, so that's a really succinct, it includes-
Yeah. So, is the idea that we would just lift that section?
Yeah. I mean, the idea was, you know, just, I gave this example because this is another city. This is more than we need.
Mm-hmm.
But just some examples of things they do include. And so, ye- yeah, basically, the idea would be to add as little as we need to, but to still cover the situations that exist.
Okay.
Right.
I think that the, the way that code currently reads it, that it doesn't specifically address, uh, you know, the rodent infestation or insects. It typically addresses things that the underlying causes, where, you know, the, the long grass, the accumulation of, of garbage in, on properties and things like that. Um, so, I, I think it covers, you know, the underlying causes, but it doesn't specifically address that.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at section 5102 of our code, it's open areas, and that's where it talks about, you know, "All open areas and premises shall be maintained and kept reasonably clean and neat," and then goes through long grass and inoperable machines and materials, things like that. You know, what we could do is just add a bullet point three that covers exactly what we need to cover here. And that would be probably my recommendation at this time, is to adopt that section. So, but I wanted to bring it to you, so if there's other things that you're interested in adding into the code, we can, uh, we can add that in.
So, any other ideas or info that you want to add? If none, none tonight, you can sure feel free to reach out to Tim and Ian and give them some ideas, because sometimes you think of it after you leave, talk to people, and-
I agree with Mel, that 500.4 subdivision 13-
Yep, I was reading that one.
Is, it addresses the situation at hand, but it also addresses, um, a previous property in my neighborhood that was the subject of potential complaint, that is now hopefully under different ownership.
And the other issue, you know, like I was mentioning, we did have another complaint about rats, and it was very clear when Ian went out and looked at it that, and the, the property owner acknowledged it. So, after we, we notified them, they, they got the exterminator in. So, I'm not sure why they, they let it go as bad as it did, but I appreciate that they're dealing with it, and that's good. So, I just think it'd be good for us not to have to depend on, there's a section of state statute that basically is a very general, and it deals with public nuisance, which is what we're using. But it's, it'd be good to be more specific. So, my plan would be then to have a public hearing on the 24th, and we'll have that notice sent to the newspaper. We'll give our 10-day notification, and then we'll have that hearing on that new ordinance, um, section that night.
On to Assistant City Administrator Finance Director Report.
These are just the investment summaries and the accounting queries, um, basically just overviewing the financials from April and March, March and April. Any questions on those?
Thank you. We'll go on to our administrators' report.
Sure. I've got a couple items tonight here. Very interesting. Legislature's moving pretty fast. Um, they've got about, I don't know, two weeks left or a week and a half left here. So, a couple of things that are definitely going to impact us. Um, you can see the, uh, the omnibus housing finance bill, so some positives there. They also did approve, um, the adult cannabis bill, uh, both in the House and Senate, so they're in conference right now on that, get that hashed out. Both the House and Senate have also approved the, um, extension of paid leave. I know the mayor's talked about it a little bit before, which will be interesting. I know that there's a possibility that we might be able to exempt from some of that. I know Linda's following up with you. The clerk's kind of on that from the payroll side of things. However, if we're not, that will mean an increase in costs that will have to be budgeted for, because it does raise the, the payroll tax. Uh, we would be liable for half of the increase, and the employee would be liable for the other half of the increase. So, um, there's positives and negatives there, but some additional costs probably. Um, I included in the, uh, tonight's packet, uh, the state orders report, so you can review that. It's quite extensive. I did note it in there. It's interesting. Different cities take different strategies. Uh, if you look through that, you can see, you know, the, the city of Casson, you know, our levy increase, and this is all self-reported, so it's what the city's submitting to the state. In Byron, they did, they increased their levy to 26 and a half percent. And so, they take a little different perspective, which is that if, they capture 100%, like they keep their tax rate level, whatever that financial number means. Like, our tax rate dropped, as you'll recall, we went from like 73 to 58, because we didn't capture 100% of the, the increase. In Byron, they, they, they captured it all. And it's interesting the way they present it is that it's a 0%. But I think that that's maybe a little bit, you know, maybe not quite accurate, but that's how they present it, because it's not an impact to the current taxpayers, because they're capturing growth. But anyways, that's just for you to review and take a look at and everything like that. So, um, other than that, I have an updated bond schedule in your packet as well. So, just so you can see, you know, this will be an impact, obviously, to our budget in the fall. Um, you know, working with Jessica, getting ready, just kind of preliminarily looking at that, you know, it is a, it, it is going to mean that our levy increase, in my opinion, this fall will have to be larger than, you know, like last year. Just because we are going to see, um, probably see the general fund, you know, very likely will be flatter, will be decreasing somewhat, but there'll be an increase in the debt service. And there isn't really a lot we can do about that. I mean, the voters approved a large project. It is a substantial one. You can see it, you know, it'll be an interest-only payment. Um, so the way that works is it'll be collectible in 2024, because the first payment is the beginning of the year in 2025. So, we have to have those funds collectible the previous year, um, so that we can make the debt service payments. First year, it's, it's an interest-only payment. After that, it's a principal and interest. So, um, anyway, just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that, and, um, you know, if you have any questions on it. But, um, right now, Mr. Bobbani's planning on being here in June, so he'll be here at the end of June, and then, uh, we would expect to issue those bonds. It'll be a 30-day period. We'll authorize them at the end of June. It'll go through the month of July. We'll have the proceeds early August, which should coincide well, because that's when the, uh, the project is anticipated to start with the demolition, hopefully after our roundabouts and, uh, construction is all done up there. Um, one thing that we're looking at doing is, uh, we're going to be probably putting that, those funds into the, the 4M account. It has a, a much more liquid fund, so we don't have to worry about the arbitrage issues or anything like that. So, the funds will go in there. Right now, it's got a decent interest rate, but that is variable. So, um, just an update on kind of some financial planning for this, uh, this coming couple of months.
Do you have kind of an idea how much we might have to raise to cover this?
Well, um, last year, we, we started levying early. We did 263,000. So, we're at that level already. So, it'll be about another $200,000 that'll be added under the debt service to cover this, uh, going forward.
It's just kind of a nice to have an idea before we get-
Well, I was, yeah, today, I've got, I've got a debt spreadsheet made up, and I'll be glad to share that with folks. I was working on that, uh, today and yesterday, so.
Which tennis courts are we replacing?
Uh, the tennis courts at Veterans Park are being relayed. The oversurfacing is supposed to start next week.
What's, what do they do exactly?
Uh, well, they will be doing, uh, uh, basically crack filling, and they'll be putting down a tack surface, like a black tack surface, and then it's a sport court that's being installed over the top.
Okay.
And I, I know we talked about it, but you may not have been at that meeting. It was later in the year, so you might-
Yeah, I didn't, I don't remember that getting approved.
Yeah. So, it'll be, basically, it's overlaying the current courts that are there. There's two of them, and if we were going to replace those, like, excavate them, re-pour them, we're looking at probably half a million dollars. So, what we ended up doing was we're installing a sport court, so it's a, kind of a rubberized tile, and it looks pretty sharp. I can get you a picture, Paul. Um, and they'll be here. You'll probably get to watch it, too, so that'll be kind of fun for you, right behind your house. But, uh, it's supposed to only take a couple of weeks. It'll have four pickleball courts on it, so one in each half of the tennis court, and then it'll have the, the two tennis courts will be overlaid. The nice part about it is that we don't have to worry as much about the underlaying, you know, bituminous, because the bituminous is going to continue to decay. And periodically, you know, we're going to need to come in and probably do some crack filling, but it won't impact the surface. So, that'll be a real positive.
So, um, sorry, how long was it going to take for that to be finished? Two weeks?
Weather-dependent, because obviously, they can only install during certain times of the day and the temperature. But, um, they anticipate two, two weeks after they start. So, I'm hoping that it's ready after, I mean, once school's out, it should be available.
So, June, we should have tennis, uh, nets up?
That's the plan.
Okay.
And I also know we need to replace the lights.
Get my rackets on.
So, I went out there with Jared, and we did talk about the, uh, the lighting there, because it's, it's, it needs to be replaced. It's, the power's working, so the lights do turn on, but he's going to be ordering some new tennis lights. So, it won't be as big of an impact in the summer, because it's, you know, it's late, later, so that isn't a huge deal. But come fall time, we want to still be able to use those, especially in the evenings. So, we'll try and get those lights. There's a bit of a lag in lead time on the lighting, but-
And we needed to upgrade or remove those, so.
And that was, for Park and Rec, I mean, basically, the idea was they weren't playable the last two years, the cracks have been seized up for quite a while.
[laughing]
At least, at least, I mean, I think the first year, we had COVID as a excuse for closing them, but the last two years, I know they haven't really been playable. So, it was either remove them and put something else there, or try and do some-
Yes, exactly. We used a good portion of our, of our liquor store funds for that crack.
That's right. And that's funded by the liquor store, so that's about 120,000 that'll be coming out of the liquor store fund.
They have put up a, "Are you interested in tennis league signed-up sheet at the high school?"
Okay.
So, you know.
Awesome. Oh, no, that is good. I mean, it's, you know, it's, I think it's going to be a really nice amenity. You know, Veterans Park is really, you know, it's going to look really good. We've got a lot of, I mean, the use there is just very substantial, like order on a regular basis, and there's a lot of young families and kids. And, um, I think, you know, for a town of our size that didn't have any tennis courts, really, that's unusual. Plus, I know, speaking with the Lions Club members, uh, who are also pickleball players, uh, they are definitely interested in having a spot where there's, you know, four pickleball courts in the same spot.
Truly.
Because a lot of times, you know, we have one at Lions. We'll need to put a second one there at some point, because it, it's not as useful, because they, usually, they Because they, usually they bring 10 of them, they go and have coffee and they come and they want to play at 10 o'clock in the morning and they want to have a couple of courts to use. So I'm hoping that we have the problem of having to schedule tennis and pickleball. That'd be a good problem to have, so.
John Talcott will be thrilled with the pickleball court.
I'm sure he will. I'm sure he'll be excited about that.
But I haven't stopped to see how many of the signatures are actually legit, but there were quite a lot of signatures on the yes, I'm.
Tennis court or league, okay.
Maybe if we get tennis league, the school again involved and want to put some in.
I mean, we had, we had talked about, you know, and I've talked with the superintendent about, you know, tennis, a larger project, because to really support a tennis team, you need to have at least six courts. And at this site, that we, the current site, it would be, the courts would have to be angled east-west, which really isn't very good for the line of sight with the sun, especially in the evenings if you're playing, you're going to be, one person's going to be blinded. So I mean, you have to switch sides, so I suppose it kind of evens out, but still not ideal to do that. So we would be looking at probably a school site as opposed to putting that on our, this is, ours are more for just residential, you know, fun play kind of thing.
But I mean, if the interest starts going.
I would love to see tennis, even if it had to be cooperative with, with, you know, Triton or somebody like that.
Sure.
I mean, I think that would be great, just like we do with hockey.
Yep.
But that's all I got. So yeah, legislatively, there's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe and we're going to be following that, you know, the last two weeks here and, and, you know, hopefully we'll get an LGA bump too, so.
Thank you. Engineers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Nothing too big tonight. Provide some project updates and obviously if any questions, feel free to ask them. So we'll just run through the projects and we're at, Shrinkout 57, the MinDOT project on the downtown area, MinDOT's leading the construction. Got started there, so we're starting to put some pipe in the ground, which is good. All the removals are done. The stoplight has been hauled off. They did hit some more contaminated material that we were expecting. We did actually get signed up to the Petro Fund, which is a way to reimburse us for our contaminant materials that we hit with our, with our pipe works that we are installing. So that is going to lessen the financial kind of blow to the city for contaminated soils. So we did go ahead and do that. It wasn't necessarily planned, but we just kind of did that this winter, so help us protect us if we did some more contaminated materials, which we did. So we did that. We worked out some signage with, you know, the first detour, the first week was pretty rough. We had some comments on some signage, local businesses that changed over the years, so we've made some adjustments and there's still been some requests that are going to be done. So that's kind of happening. We met with the Marquards, which are the two owners, excuse me, of the Images Building. We did talk about the impacts of that project because she bought it this, I think this last winter, where she got the gym up and running. So there's been some pretty big impacts to that parking lot that we talked about with its previous owners, we're kind of getting up to a speed. So it was a good meeting. Tim and I attended along with Public Works and MinDOT. So that's 57 update. 16th Street Roundabout, again, that project's up and running, starting to put utilities in, so we got a big mess up there, obviously. We did meet with the two property owners there. We did tweak that driveway. We were kind of planning on having the trucks coming off the highway and the new driveway, then kind of going in the front of the houses. They both agreed that they'd preferred it to go between the houses to get to the backyard. So that was agreeable to the other property owner too that we have to go, go across, the third owner. So we made that change. I think it worked out for everybody. Everybody's happy up there, so that's going well. A quick trip in with them. They're going to be installing their utilities as part of the projects. We coordinated that, so that's moving forward. I think they're going to be starting soon as we're kind of done and up and running in the middle of July is when they're looking at doing some work. So that's moving forward. Probably all can see the water tower, so probably not much to update there, but as you can see, they're all painting that. Yep, so it's going to be blue, looks just like our CHS tower, the tower over by the railroad tracks. And we're going to have that all completed by the fairgrounds and timeline there, so that's moving forward. Vale Property and that apartment, again, down by the CHS Water Tower. Concrete went down today, so we're starting there. We still have some concrete roads and driveways to pour, but that's moving forward, so paving that out shortly because we're talking about a June 15 completion date. And I understand the apartments want to open up about the same time, maybe even June 1st, so racing to get that project done, so.
Do you think they'll be able to actually pour the street next week after it hardens?
Potentially. They have to do some other concrete work, but that's the intent is to get that done, so.
We could get it done before the grand opening. That probably would be ideal.
Yep, absolutely. So we're, contractors on top of each other and banging back goes off of each other, but we're trying to get it done and there's a lot of other work to do there. Because once we get the concrete down, we still got to switch driveways over and whatnot, but that's where we're trending to that direction, so we'll see how it goes here. So that's Vale Property, some private developments. We have some lingering things with them on cleaning some stuff up. So we're going to be kind of cracking the whip, if you will, on getting some of the other private subdivisions done because they're just been lingering out there. So that's something myself and Public Works have been working on, to get everything wrapped up and get the final grading and just punch this stuff down. So that's kind of happening as we've seen kind of a lull here in our applications and development, but we had a fair amount of lots that are opening out there. So I don't think that's holding anything up, but I think it'll be a year or two here that we'll have a little bit of slowdown. So we want to get everything we got all buttoned up before we take another big jump into private development. And just FYI, for all the school, we still have to do the Fifth Avenue and 16th Street intersection. We're going to do that after school's out and the detours are obviously, we have too much traffic there and we don't want to do that project. So we pushed off that last little bit of work until that school's out. And then our 2023 street project, we're still in a holding pattern there. We'll hear when the contractor wants to get started. Here in a couple of months or two, once they get their kind of big DOT work done, paving projects done, then they kind of come back and work on these municipal projects. So that's where we're at on that. City website has these projects kind of listed out and their general impacts and timelines for the public with not a whole ton of detail, but I think it's probably adequate just to know where things are at in the city. So with that, I'll pause and answer any questions you may have.
Has the contractors had much issues with the construction with people trying to get around?
I think it was that first week, but I think, and your city engineer may have driven all the way down 34 and gotten to the detour that he worked on for two years and realized that he had to turn back around. I was a little embarrassed, so.
You were checking on the project?
I was checking on the project, but I thought I was going to buzz around, but I didn't realize that we have a big detour in. So I think people like that one realize that, especially in 34, that's kind of a, it's a tough, it's a tough detour. Once they realize it was closed, closed, then realize that it was actually closed and that, you know, for the first week, everybody corrected and I think everybody's fine. So, you know, small tweaks here and there. I know Public Works and Tim put up some stop signs on Main and Second there, which I think is helpful.
It's been quite helpful.
I think that's helped out a lot too, so I think it's been good.
The only, the only confusing part, and sometimes it would be nice, is on 34, because when you try to cross, especially Darren Rushhour, like coming here tonight to the meeting, you have people coming out of the chaotic good and then people coming in the west. And then the people that are going north-south think that they're stopping because of the other spot.
Sure, I know that issue with that. Of course, it's a county rule.
I know.
You know, Guy Colenhafter has to get, get on board with that.
I know.
He might be willing to do it too, so.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that.
It's just an idea, because it seems like a bottleneck there, because, and then people ain't sure they go and then people all of a sudden turn and then people go. And I watched it tonight and I thought there was almost going to be an accident in front of me, just because people.
Well, that's a fair point. If you would just email Guy maybe, that'd be great.
It's an option.
Yeah, I mean.
It doesn't impact a huge amount of traffic. It's really just coming from the brewery pretty much. Or once in a while, you know, you got somebody coming from the bank or from.
Would it help the flow of traffic if you were going north-south, put stop signs out and put a stop sign on East and West on 534? Because everyone's coming from Rochester, going through there, and everyone has to stop before they take a left or go straight. If you want to go on 34 or go up north, back into town. Would it speed up traffic? Because most people are going to get on 34, if they're coming out of, going out of town, they're going to take a right behind, before chaotic, which means they're not going to have to stop because they're taking a right. So most people are stopping to wait, decide if that person is going to use their blinker.
Well, I would think if we, we try the four-way, because what people are doing is they're just going one block farther west and getting onto 34 so they can come up and don't have to stop. And then the people going north-south have to bottleneck because people have learned they can run around, so.
And it does bottleneck, you know what?
But if you had it four-way stop, I think people would quit trying to detour around it to quit sneak past it. Because that's what they were doing tonight. I saw them going up a block or two and then run down and then, then you get up to the stop sign and they're like.
They might not have to do that if there's no stop sign going north and south.
Yeah, one or the other, but.
I'll talk to MinDOT and the county about it, just to look at it.
Because it was backed up all the way to 57.
57 again, yes.
No, I mean, at the wrong time of day, it can back up quite badly. And then you're really better off just going through the tack and, you know, kind of sneaking past.
You're better off going and taking Ninth off of.
I drive to Dodge Center and come back.
Oh, yeah, County Nine.
Or go up to 16th and go out on 15, you know, it's probably better. But, okay, well, that sounds good. We'll follow up with Guy. That's a good thought. And I appreciate it because the first week was kind of crazy. I think people have settled into it now. They kind of know where to go.
Absolutely.
And it's certainly been interesting for me seeing, like we talked about a little bit, the Planning Commission, you know, with parking study on Main Street, like we've put stop signs on Main Street. Like, is that a possible viable solution to improve the safety on that street? Because otherwise you just can't.
It is really nice.
Oh, right.
Yeah, safety-wise, I agree. It's really nice, but.
But it's either that or you have to take parking stalls away so you can have more space to see, sight vision, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
That's things we'll have to determine later.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Next, we will go into personnel. The Mayo policy for work from home discussion.
Sure. So this is our work from home discussion. At the last meeting, council members asked us to bring in some draft policies. So we asked a lot of other cities, variety. We tried to focus on cities that were relatively similar size, staffing levels too, because it makes most sense to do a comparable as opposed to going to Rochester or obviously St. Paul or something like that. So there's two policies in there and neither one of these is perfect. There's Policy B and Policy W, just for the sake of which cities they came from, is really what it is. But they both have different parts that some are, you know, they're good, bad, want to get them in front of you. Included also is a few other things, some questions that staff came up with. So there's some questions for consideration. I know, speaking with some staff members, you know, for council, take a look at, you know, just to think about who would get to do this, how to decide, you know, what constitutes an emergency, who decides what that is, you know, how do you effectively supervise when not in the office? What hours do we require for work, if any specific hours? What would be some reasons for work from home? And should the employee have worked for the city for a length of time before being allowed to work from home? So just some thoughts that came from different staff people. And then also, just being in the orbit of Mayo, I know that Linda was able to reach out to Dwayne and he did share some things. So appreciate former council member of giving us some feedback on what, you know, Mayo looks at, because they do do a lot of remote work now. So you can kind of see what those, those items that he included for, he wasn't able to share the whole policy because of some privacy concerns, but some things that they definitely look out as a supervisor, what he looks for. So basically, we're just asking for your feedback and I know Councilman Ferris had emailed me a question too about workers' comp. So that's something we can certainly talk about as well.
Well, just looking at the Mayo, just to put that in perspective, Mayo employs 48,000 employees. And they have supervisors over supervisors, so if somebody's gone, there's somebody else there always on site. So their whole policy would be completely different than what we could do, just in that aspect, in my opinion, because they always have a checks and balance that we would never be able to.
Sure. I do think that some of the considerations they have though are probably relevant for any organization, any policy that we would have. You know, for example, and I think it's involved in those two policies that you have in your packet, you know, it's, it's considered a privilege that could be revoked.
Yes.
You know, it's something, so that's fair. We need people to dedicate a space to the, to the job. They need to pay their full attention to it. Obviously, internet speeds mentioned, work hours, schedules, that kind of stuff I think is kind of something that would cover just about any.
Yeah, because I know they, when they do do it, they have them, they have to log in on their system and they have to be available now, not two hours later. If they get a, they have to respond in a timely manner. So I mean, if you were to do what you, we'd have to, they would end up working the same hours at home as at City Hall, in my opinion. Because they'd have to be available when the public wants them, not at home at night, because how are you going to answer a question? You know, most people are going to come during city hours if they're going to ask. Let's just, and Mayo sees that. I've seen other people that have done remote from home. And, but theirs is more of a on-the-phone type. It's more of a.
Position.
Position where it's, they're not interacting with the city. They're interacting with clients that have scheduled appointments with them, but it's during Monday through Friday. Not after hours.
Yeah.
Which.
Anything you guys got over there? So I mean, that's what we're, we're looking for a conversation, like just some feedback. Because I mean, we need to have kind of, as staff sort of sort of distill this down to something that might be feasible to execute.
My concern, as always, was going to be, after I researched the workers' comp and realized, I forgot how liberal Minnesota is when it comes to some of these things, but when it comes to workers' comp, they're pretty liberal. So I know the article I found, I'm reasonably sure was from a plaintiff's attorney's perspective, but it would be nice to know what the state is actually requiring employers to provide as far as work from home conditions. Like it was talking about employers being required to provide ergonomic, ergonomically safe situations for employees who are working from home that they can take to their home.
And on that aspect too, if they get injured at home, who's supervised to note? At work, you usually have another coworker that saw that you fell or at home, are they, not saying anybody to do it, but were they drinking because they're at home and fell down the stairs, but they were logged in? Now, is that a work comp issue or is that, so that's, you know, that's a good point. You got to make sure we're covering every aspect, because.
Have you heard anything on any of those kind of claims or anything like that or any feedback? Is there any, could you research, I mean, stick with the city attorney's group, maybe at the league and see if they've got, I'm sure it's come up before, because.
We can't be going to one thinking.
The policies we included were from cities that have passed these. And I've reviewed a lot of different policies from lots of different cities and both of those, they talk about it being the responsibility of the employee. But if legally, you know, I can make a policy even if it's not, you know, until it gets tested and then there's a lawsuit or something. And we don't want to get into a position where there'd be a lawsuit, for sure.
Yeah, because, yeah, and how do you, how do you know how they got injured? You know, I mean.
Well, I mean, to a certain extent, it's, it's no different from, you know, employees who are at work.
Yep.
So I mean, if I've got an employee who's at work, who is by themselves and they're goofing off, I mean, they could hurt themselves that way too. It does happen. Not here at Cassin.
So.
We don't goof off at work.
Most companies have a policy that you cannot be at work alone.
Yeah.
Our company does. I guarantee Mayo does. I mean, you know, all the, so if you're working from home, now you're by yourself. So there might be a legality in there. We have to make sure we're covering.
Right.
I mean, other businesses do it, so obviously it can happen, but I don't want to.
Sectional workers' comp.
But I haven't heard anybody talk about that, so.
Sure, exciting. Working by yourself. That's a, that's a good question.
Because I know like at our work, you cannot be there alone. Strictly because of if you fall.
Right.
How long are you laying there?
And you work in, you have industrial.
But even.
A little different.
Even our office staff is not.
We actually, City Hall, we always have these two people here. That's more for safety concerns than if they're a workers' comp issue, but.
But it's safety too. I mean, I mean, you're looking out for the employee that way too. I mean, obviously you don't want them to be injured or, but, I mean, when you're at home, that's, I mean.
You trip over the dog?
Yeah, but you're home by yourself when you're not working, so, but, I mean, there is ideas. I just.
No, I mean, I think safety is something we definitely, and if the city attorney can do some research on that, that'd be really helpful, yeah. Ryan, did you have any thoughts on it?
I was telling, I was just looking at that 6D because that was, it was in the workers' comp part. It's very extensive, the hybrid TELA work policy, so nice work on that.
Well, I can't take 100% credit because, you know, I stand on the backs of the folks who do this work, but I did try to select policies that I thought would be potentially feasible. Some of them are a little out there and they also are for communities, like obviously Rochester's got a different style. Because, you know, if you're an executive, you know, I know Aaron Parrish, who lives in Cassin, who's the Assistant City Manager in Rochester. He's not doing it now, but for almost two years, I mean, he was working from home. And it worked because, you know, the secretarial staff and the frontline staff was in the office, you know. For us, I mean, I think there's a lot of interaction at all levels, so.
And I know from personal dealing with a customer, he works for a bigger corporation and he's been working from home for over two years. And he works in his garage wearing a headset and works on his own projects while he's working.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, depending on the work, it's more feasible or less feasible.
Yeah, so I mean, he's doing two jobs and one. But if he's getting his work done, I guess, but, you know, you got to look at it that way too.
Yeah.
Paul, do you have any feedback? If the person's working at home and they're in good standing with, with the city, they've done their job. We don't have any concerns about their work quality and their checks and balances. I feel like we have a, that policy looks good and it covers a lot of that. And if we have that trust and if it's approved, we make those checks to make sure they're actually doing what we want them to. And if it's not working, then it gets addressed quickly because if it's not working, it's not working.
Paul, did you have any, I know you mentioned you have worked from home before. Obviously, that was a little different setup with, with your company and everything, but.
Right. I mean, I'll just say again, I think what I told you the last time is that you're the one that's going to have to deal with the fallout of whatever policy you've put in place. So, you know, I guess I, whatever you would recommend, I think is kind of what I'd lean to.
We got to, not to cut you off, sorry, Paul. So we also got to make sure we're looking into it. If we're allowing it, the way you were talking, to exempt salary only, we got to make sure, does it affect other salaries? Because you have other exempt salaries that don't work at City Hall that, could they be doing part of their job remotely?
Yeah, I mean, I think that definitely is something that would have to be laid out as.
Because you'd have your Public Works Director who sometimes does not have to be there because he has an assistant Public Works.
Yeah, I mean, I was talking to Charlie and he's not interested.
No, but when he.
He said when they redo Manorville Bridge, when they're resurfacing there and that's closed, he said he might have to swim across instead of, but he's.
But I mean, that's, that's the way you look at it. We're not looking now. We're looking.
No, no, I agree and, you know, you're absolutely right, because, you know, eventually you will have turnover with employees and you'll have people who have different work styles and you'll see a, I mean, we're already seeing it in the workforce from a changeover from, you know, baby boomers to, you know, millennials. And bad, good, in-between, doesn't matter. It's just, it's different and that's something we have to be open to. You know, part of it is, you know, I have to try and look at the positives and the negatives. So, you know, what are the positives? You know, we've talked a lot about the negatives, right? I mean, there are, there are potential for worker comp issues. There's potential for, you know, maybe not having as much transparency with employees who aren't available as much in person. You know, positives, I mean, I think, I do see, you know, it could be a recruitment tool. So I mean, you know, it might be for some folks, they like that concept of work from home. So I mean, that could be something that could be useful. You know, other than that, I mean, I guess, you know, Paul, you work from home, I mean, you saw it as just greater flexibility or?
Yeah, I mean, my role as an engineer was, you know, I didn't have to interact that much outside of with my coworkers. So we had set hours during the day, which were less than you normally have a workday, right? So nine to three, you have to be available and then our policy was, we schedule all meetings during that time. So that way, the, you know, the people who like working in the mornings, they get up there, they're working at six and then they're done at three. Like me, I don't like getting up early, so I'm there at nine and I'm working till six or whatever, right?
Which, which, I mean, that's, so that's the positive, you know, if you have a little different workflow, you know. Which, which, I mean, that's, so that's the positive, you know, if you have a little different workflow, you know, and I'm not necessarily always a morning person either, so, you know, I can definitely see where that would, would come into it. So, I mean, I guess to me, that's probably the positive, is you might, you might be able to use it as a tool for some recruitment.
Staff satisfaction too, I, I look at it, we, we are not trusted in our district to use our workdays at home. But a school five miles to the east of us does. Um, so that's a, it's a feeling that you get if you're trusted enough to do your job at home.
Sure.
Occasionally, and get the work done, it goes a long way to show trust to your staff. So that might be another positive. Workdays and the quarter days. Your workdays, if you're not allowed.
Any other feedback tonight? All right, well, I know the mayor has given me his feedback, so, uh, that will definitely be incorporated, yeah, in, uh, in any comments we write up. So I think what the plan would be is we'll try and take, you know, these two policies, we'll sort of go through and see, you know, kind of bit by bit of which one we like better, and try to get down to one policy, and then bring that back to, to council and. And, you know, in the long run, you know, you make the choice whether we institute it or we make changes, that's certainly always up to you guys.
If we go that to implementing, we need to make sure we got to, for our decision, at least for my decision, I'd like to hear from every department head that would have a say whether, if they could go or not go.
Sure.
Because, again, I mentioned the Public Works Director, even though he doesn't say now, down the road, you have your Chief of Police, who partially can work remotely, even though he does patrol, there is times that he could sit at office, at home and field calls and he, you know.
Sure.
I mean, there's, do we want that or do we not want that? I mean, and.
Well, I mean, if you're going to do one. I mean, one thing we could do, I mean, to that point, would be, uh, I think it'd be really healthy is to, uh, maybe just do a survey of all the staff.
Sure.
Not even just department heads.
That's fine.
Because, I mean, we may, we may say it more, you know, it's more towards department heads now. But I think surveying all staff, seeing like, is there interest? You know, would you be interested in doing it if it was even viable? And, I mean, because if, if, if it's overwhelmingly, there's not any interest, then, I mean, that's informative. If there's a lot of interest, then it maybe even puts more pressure to do a policy.
And to, but then you have to start looking at including more then.
Yeah, but no, I think that's definitely something, maybe Linda, that's something we could follow up with from the HR side of things. Get something written up and we'll, you know, work with Jessica too. And, because I, I, I agree, I think it'd be really good to get feedback from, from all the staff, um, you know, who are willing to.
You don't, you don't want to include Public Works guys, though, or?
Yeah, I want to hear from everybody.
You want everybody? If they could work from home, they would?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know about it.
I don't know how.
I would want their opinion though, because they're going to give their opinion if they think their supervisor's going to be, because they will be able to give you an input. Saying, my supervisor's gone, how?
Well, I mean, maybe even be something along the lines of.
I don't know how you write it up.
If the city instituted a work from home policy, are you confident that your supervisor would be able to continue to direct you as a employee?
And answer your questions in a timely manner and.
Because that, that's, I mean, that's really the gist of it, because, I mean, I know, I think, which, which city was it? Was it Wasika you talked to and you said that it was, there was maybe three employees, it was like the library director that sometimes did it? And maybe two other people?
That, I believe, was Dodge Center.
Was that Dodge Center, okay. So I mean, so, you know, it is a finite pool of people that would even be able to. But yeah, I mean, I want to get some feedback from the whole staff, because I think that's really important too, when making a big change like this.
Because they're going to, they'll be most honest if they feel they can do their job without.
And we can make it, we'll, we'll make it anonymous.
You can do a Survey Monkey.
What's that?
Do a Survey Monkey, there's no ties to it at all. Oh, there you go, yes.
You can be a pro with that, so that might be good.
And then you could even, after that, you could even reach out to the public in a newsletter and ask them what they think of it as. Because you'll get some good input either way, because they'll say, because it is their taxpayer money that is paying for this.
Yeah, I, I feel, but.
And you might only get ten people.
It might be interesting to see what we get from staff first, if they can follow up.[1692.81]